A little past nine, we're going to call the meetings to order. Can we first have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First, we are going to call together the meeting for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Mr. Clerk?
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Here. The first item is the approval of the minutes. That's A. B is to call for a meeting and set it for Tuesday, February 7th, 2012, as the date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the additions of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value of property. Could I have a motion?
Motion approved.
That's a motion for A and B. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk? Next, we have citizen comments. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment or addresses board on any issue regarding the Douglas County Board of Equalization that is not on today's agenda?
Question.
Seeing none, we will proceed to the next item, which are resolutions. We have two resolutions here. One is D, which is related to the certified assessment correction reflecting correction in the values of property, CAC 12014, and E is approving the application for tax exemption on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Motion approved.
And this is a motion for D and E?
Yes.
Could we please have a vote? Next, we have a protest of certified assessment correction for 2223 Dodge Street. Mr. Kubat, would you like to address this issue first?
Yes. This was a protest of a certified assessment correction. It's been reviewed by the referee that made a recommendation to this board. It's also been submitted to the county assessor's office, and everybody's in agreement that an appropriate valuation for the Old Northern Natural Gas building should be $2,208,000.
I'd still move for approval of that change. Second. Right now with writ yesterday is what they're doing is absolutely correct.
And would you like to add and adjourn to your motion?
End adjourn.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to make the adjustment and to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote. Next, we will adjourn as the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Apparently, I meant to say convene. Okay. Approval of the minutes of the Noxious Weed Control Authority meeting held on January 24th.
Motion approved.
Call for the vote. Next, we have citizen comments. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda regarding the Noxious Weed Control Authority? This is your opportunity. Seeing none, we will go to the resolutions. We have a resolution placing special assessments on property in Douglas County, and we have -- do we need to take these separately, or can we take them together? We have a resolution authorizing the county weed superintendent to sign and serve notices on behalf of the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority.
Motion approved.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Just the two, Mr. Chairman?
Just the two, yes.
Okay. Just a moment, please.
And next, we have a presentation and approval.
Motion passes.
Oops. Jumping the gun today. Next, we have a presentation and approval of the Douglas County Noxious Weed Authority Controls 2011 Annual Report for the Nebraska Department of Agriculture.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman Craft. Each year, as part of my weed control plan and each year, as part of my office as superintendent of weed control for the county, I take a look at my control strategies, and I'm always evaluating each part of that, and a part of that is each strategy for the noxious weeds. My station as superintendent involves both the noxious weeds and the county's nuisance weed control abatement. This presentation is talking about phragmides, which is one of the state noxious weeds, one of the 11 noxious weeds, that was designated as noxious weed in April of 2008. And this weed is commonly found on the Platte River and also off river sites. This location is in Valley, Nebraska. If you were to take Highway 275 out west, if you were to look south, you could probably see it. This plant is about 12-foot tall. It dominates the landscape. This plant can dominate the landscape within a few years and choke out all the native vegetation and things like that. This picture was taken in the fall, so you have the seed head, you have the plume, the in fluorescence of that seed head right there in front of you. The nature of this plant here is all the locations of the off-river sites. Some of these might be in your district here. I know Mary Ann has quite a few out in her district. This plant dominates lakes, wetlands, road sides, crop borders, ditches, and sites that are wet for part of the year. This year, we took a look at the sites that were sprayed. What we wanted to know, our question was, even though we're treating this plant probably August through September, are we really controlling this plant? Are we controlling the seed production, which causes new infestations both on the river and off the river? So there were nine samples taken from Sarpy County, Douglas County, Lancaster County. In each county, the samples were taken from both treated and untreated stands, and we're taking two of those seed heads for each location. And the control dates for each location range from August to mid-October. So again, we're looking at that control timeframe, we're looking to see if we're controlling the seed production. And we sent those samples to the seed lab, the Nebraska Crop Improvement Seed Lab in Lincoln, Nebraska, which is underneath of the Department of Agriculture. What we found was that applications in August and September were controlling the seed production, but if we got too late into October, then we're losing control on the seed production. So the results show that August is the target month for control of phragmides. Which brings us to the larger discussion as part of my control plan. This work that we've done with the seed lab in Lincoln will be incorporated into my control plan for 2012. And so the target of control has changed from fall to a specific month of August. We have a very narrow window of opportunity to control this plant. And so this is a case of we're using plant science to maximize our efforts and maximize control. This study and this changing of our control strategy will help us both with the on-river sites, on the Platte River, and also the off-river sites, on the roadside, lakes, wetlands, and areas where phragmides inhabit. So this is going to save control measures going in 2012 and moving forward. And each year, as part of my control plan, which all of you had sent to your office, I always look at the control strategies for each noxious weed in Douglas County, which includes mus thistle, purple loose drive candidate thistle, and leafy spurge, and then you can see those windows of opportunity that we have for control for each one of those plants every year. And that concludes my presentation for you guys this morning.
Okay, and do we have any questions? Seeing none, we need a motion to accept and adjourn.
I would move to approve the New Year's Noxious Weed Plan and adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will adjourn. We will -- boy, I'm hurrying. Next, we will convene as the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Here. First, we have the minutes and claims. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held January 24th, 2012. Approval of claims submitted for payment, this is item B, processed through Tuesday, January 31st, 2012. A complete listing is at the office of the county clerk controller, also available online at his website. And D is approval of Douglas County presenting a report and requesting action on claims being submitted as exemptions.
Could we take B separately, because I want to abstain on that one?
We will remove B, so we'll vote on A and C.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Thank you.
Move to approve of item B.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Just a moment, please. Okay.
Look at that.
You haven't started.
No way.
This has been Mike's train from here.
I am in charge. Please note, I'm taking over. I wish to do a jersey.
Oh, man.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Tusha, Commissioner Duda. Motion passes.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Items A through I for a total of nine items. Is there anything any commissioner would like removed? Yes?
Yes, I would. I wanted to -- I could, I'd like to speak about the item G, so if you could take that separate.
Are there any other items we wish to have pulled from the consent agenda?
For discussion, yes.
So items B and G will be pulled from the consent agenda.
Motion approved, A through I, with B and G.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Call for the vote. We will now take item B for discussion. Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. And I intend to --
To be supporting this bill or this motion.
I just wanted to lay out, though, I've got concerns, and I understand that we are at the mercy of -- is it probation? That the state probation office makes a whole lot of calls, and then we do what they say. I like working with Sarpy County. I'm comfortable moving forward, doing service with them, but this is a contract to help hold some of our youth down there. I think we've got a great youth center. We are not set up for staff security yet. I understand that, and so there are some youths that we cannot be holding right now, and those are the ones I'd really prefer to see going to Sarpy County. I wish this thing --
Commissioner Duda, if I could interject.
Yes.
I think you're -- we have a similar item under the E Criminal Justice Committee.
Isn't that this?
No, this is on us accepting their youth detention.
Okay, never mind. Thank you. Sorry.
Why should I approve B?
Call for the vote.
March rubbing.
This meeting's gone on too long already.
I agree. We were supposed to adjourn by now.
Well, I tried.
Yeah, I know.
Commissioner Morgan?
What was the other?
Motion passes.
Next, we have on the floor item G. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes. Jim, could you come to the podium? This is an agreement with a software company, and this is one of my favorite subjects, of course, is computers and these sort of things. But when I look at that, I guess, Jim, if you could tell us what this is just briefly, I think I know, but could you go ahead and tell us?
Certainly. You've got Jim Torvill, Minister of Douglas County Health Center. This is an upgrade of a current system we have that we've had for over 25 years. It's an ANSSO staffing system. It is interactive, whereby the employees will be able to schedule themselves in real time by using a computer or smartphone. Projected, it'll save us the first year $219,000 in overtime wages, as well as pool labor, because the employees will have greater control over their schedule. And if there's something that comes up in their personal life where they're not able to work a certain day, they can look to see who else is off that or on that day, I should say, in trade days, so we would not have to find a replacement for them. They would find their own replacements. This is a system that if we had kept our maintenance contract on our old system, that was, as I indicated, 25 years old, we would have been -- we canceled our maintenance contract on the old system in 2000, and that was about $12,000 per year, and we did that because of cost savings. So if we had maintained that system for the past 11 years, we would have spent $132,000 on maintenance, and that would still not have given us the modules, the web scheduling, the interface with HR, where we can get the employees' wages, so we'll know which employee is least expensive to schedule, and also would not have interfaced with our time and attendance system we have at the health center. The funds are available for this purchase. They come from bond proceeds, so it's not going to be additional cost. So the money is there. It's been there for about three years.
If it comes from bond proceeds, I thought that had to have a life of at least 15 years.
No. Mike, we checked with bond counsel on Baird Home, and a piece of software like this is allowable under the bond proceeds, so we confirmed with bond counsel that that is an adequate form of financing for this.
Thank you. The -- I guess, these things always raise my radar, because, you know, you may not remember, but I do. We gave Dotcom half a million dollars to set up an email system, and so did the city. And I said at the time, we should just use Yahoo, and everybody kind of looked at me like I was from Mars. Well, we should have used Yahoo. And this is another case where I can't believe this kind of information is not available just on the web for us to try to find some kind of a scheduling system, you know, that's free. I mean, my own personal calendar, I don't pay anything for it, and I found something free on the web, and that's what I use. And Karen Cole in our office accesses and updates my calendar at no charge at all, just her time. But I just feel like this is something, you know, it's going to cost, if we have 400 employees, it's going to cost $287.50 just to buy this, per employee. And, you know, do we have a clerk who's doing this already, or are we hiring somebody again?
We have two people who are doing it right now.
I'm sorry?
We have two individuals who are doing it right now.
What are they doing if they don't have the software?
They've got an old manual system. They put it into the computer manually, the calendar, and then once the calendar is posted, the hard copy is posted, then they have to go back and change it all manually on the hard copy.
No. Jim, we both know that can be done on a computer. I just can't believe this can't be done.
Well, the thing that also, like I shared with you, is it does allow the employees to access their schedule in real time on the computer and go ahead and change it within certain parameters.
Well, doesn't Outlook offer this? I mean, don't we have Outlook? And what do we use? What's the big Oracle? Surely, we have an application someplace that we paid, what, $17 million for Oracle or something? Don't we have some little calendar there we can access?
Not to my knowledge.
Mr. Tre -- why don't we ask Phil Ollie if he would comment on this?
Phil, could you comment?
He might be able to help.
Good morning, Commissioners. Phil Ollie with Dotcom. This really is more than a calendaring piece. It also goes into the skills and the certifications of those caregivers, and it tries to schedule appropriately based on need and the -- not the attendance, but the census at the time. So if the census goes down, it can adjust the manpower that would be needed there.
Does the computer do this by itself?
It does. There's logic that's built in there, business rules that you have to build in there, and then based on those, it will adjust.
We just, I don't think we can afford it. I just don't think we need to spend the money, particularly when your whole department is being reviewed by a blue-ribbon committee. I just see this as a totally unnecessary expenditure. And of course, I really appreciate it that it says either vote on this by today or the offer's gone. That's another thing, bringing these up on deadline. I think most people know that really doesn't make me real happy when we have to vote on deadline on something. I always feel like we're getting the bumps rush when we're told, "E, vote for it today or else it's gone," you know? So I don't appreciate that first. But the other thing is, I just think we're -- this is a waste of money. You can't tell me that two employees can't figure out where to put employees who are needed. I mean, certainly, they know their skill sets, that they can give oxygen or whatever it is they need to do. I just think this is a boondoggle and totally unnecessary. So I'll probably be the only one who votes no, but I think this is a big waste of money and just gives Governor Heineman another headline.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. What is the projected payback on this? How long will it take for this investment?
Seven months.
It'll pay itself off in seven months.
We recovered the costs, but in seven months, right? The return on investment, seven months.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other Commissioners wish to comment? This is an item that we've had in front of the Board of Trustees twice, correct?
Once. Yes.
I thought we were introduced to it.
We talked about medical record, electronic medical record previously.
That is correct. Thank you. And there was a lengthy discussion about it at yesterday's board meeting, and the presentation was very good. The payback period is short, and it does do things faster and more efficiently than the two people you're using, plus it does additional things. It enhances the entire experience.
Correct.
So we need a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have recognitions and proclamations, and there are none that I'm aware of. Citizen comments. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will go to presentations. There are none, public hearings. There are none. And committee discussions. Finance Committee, Commissioners Duda and Morgan.
I don't think there's a report to submit.
Yeah, nothing to report, and I haven't admitted.
Okay. Administrative Services, Commissioner Tusa?
Nothing today, thank you.
Child and Youth Services, nothing today. There will be a meeting the first Tuesday of every month at 1:00 PM in the Omaha Douglas Civic Center, Room 903. Community Services, Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. We have for the Board's consideration today an interlocal agreement between Douglas County and the City of Omaha concerning solid waste planning. This did go through committee. Kent, what would you like to share with us?
Excuse me. Good morning, Commissioners. Kent Holm, Director of Environmental Services. Just a very short couple of slides here, just to kind of orient you on where we're at and why this is being presented and so on. Back in the early '90s, the state of Nebraska adopted the Regional Integrated Solid Waste Management Act, and this did a couple of things. One, it really tried to consolidate and eliminate a lot of the small quote-unquote dumps that existed around the state, and went to a more system, organized system, that was more easily regulated and more environmentally controlled in terms of regional landfills. And I believe we are at the point now where we have 23 regional landfills within the state of Nebraska. One of the key components of that act was to define that cities and counties are responsible for the provision of solid waste collection and disposal services. And here locally, City of Omaha has been the primary provider of those collection services and systems, while Douglas County, through our contract with a particular landfill, has been the primary provider of disposal services. What we're looking to do with this proposed interlocal agreement is really to work more closely with the City of Omaha to develop and implement a more solid, a comprehensive solid waste management program, and doing that to address liability concerns, do that in a more proactive manner. Very important to help us retain the value of the solid waste and keep that here, being able to gather the value of that solid waste, and then turn that around and help to fund sustainable programs in the realm of recycling, diversion, and other related programs. So the initial steps that the interlocal defines is really just one, to ensure that the contracts that we have control over, both the city and the county, require, as part of the terms of those contracts, disposal of the Pheasant Point landfill. And then, as we work with the city to develop an initial plan for the sustainable management of these solid waste systems and the facilities, that then will also be coordinated with the ongoing efforts right now through MAPPA. They are facilitating the update of that original 1994 Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan. Those are my prepared remarks. At this point, I'd be happy to address any questions or concerns that you have about the interlocal that's proposed for you. This is certainly a step in the right direction. It allows us to work more closely with the city on all aspects of solid waste management. The city, as you may know, this past year adopted an environmental element to their master plan, a number of resource conservation goals and strategies in that particular environmental element that deal with solid waste, being able to establish some recycling and diversion goals and so on. And it makes sense for us to partner with them to really develop some good sustainable programs and facilities and systems that are consistent with our mandate from the state in terms of providing those disposal and collection services, as well as master plan, a number of resource conservation goals and strategies in that particular environmental element that deal with solid waste, being able to establish some recycling and diversion goals and so on. And it makes sense for us to partner with them, to really develop some good sustainable programs and facilities and systems that are consistent with our mandate from the state in terms of providing those disposal and collection services, as well as addressing liability concerns and then also being able to capture the value of that solid waste and being able to utilize it here for sustainable programs. So with that, I'd entertain any questions you have.
And I would move for the approval.
Second.
Any questions? We have a motion, a second. Call for the vote.
Thank you, Kent.
Second.
While we're voting, Kent, how long was this in the works?
Well, it's been in the works for a while. Thank Mary Ann's leadership and getting this going. Unfortunately, we had that little bit of water over in the creek over here that slowed things down considerably. And so we're happy to be here in this position today, pushing ahead with this. But yeah, Mother Nature kind of threw us some curves last year.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, whoops. Next, we have Criminal Justice, Commissioner Boyle.
We're going to be having a meeting, I believe it's, Mark was here, he's going to be sending me some dates. Do we have a meeting this Friday, is that correct? We do. Right. And so that'll be coming up. What we're going to be doing is discussing work release and day reporting, how they interface, what they really are, and try to get into that a little bit because there's been, at least on my part, some confusion on who's doing what. And also, we'll be taking, using that time to tour the facilities. We do have a good-sized agenda to discuss the lobby issue again and some other things. And so I think it should be a good meeting and I hope everyone will be able to get it onto their schedule. So that's the most important thing coming up right now. Things are moving.
Is that the gym?
Yes, it is at the, I guess it'll probably be at the.
At Criminal Justice Center.
Criminal Justice Center. So that, we'll be coming right in off Jackson Street, is that correct? Everything's moving along, it seems real well on 911 with Sarpy County, some other things going on with that, that seems to be progressing very well. We do have legislation that was introduced to increase our funding to a dollar on the 911 surcharge for cell phones. We're the only county in the state that has 50 cents. And so that seems to be moving in the right direction. So those are probably the most important things that are going on right now with criminal justice. Oh, excuse me. Oh, I do, excuse me, I'm looking up a bill, so I don't have the agenda. We do have Commissioner Borgeson and Chris Rogers are going to be speaking about staff secure detention agreement with Sarpy County. So if I, I'll turn that over to Commissioner Rogers, if she'd like to start.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. And I'll just pass over to Commissioner Duda to continue his remarks and then Commissioner Borgeson.
If I could, could I give a little brief history, though? Just so it sets the tone that if you remember, throughout the course of the last few months, we had contracted with Youth Links in order to house our chronic, missing and chronic runaway youth in the community. And the contract was a little bit too expensive for the Board to continue to contract with them. While Commissioner Rogers was in Portland or Baltimore? I can't remember where you were. Wherever you were, with Sarpy.
I thought he was in Hollywood.
With Sarpy County.
Portland.
Portland. They mentioned to Commissioner Rogers that maybe we should have some discussions about using their facility for staff secure as they use our facility for secure. And maybe there could be some kind of an agreement and arrangement that would work out for the best of us. And we only had one bed for a while and two for a short time at Youth Links, but Sarpy was offering us five to 10. And 10 seems to be a good number, but yet not the number that we actually need. And so we had a couple of meetings about it and asked Patrick to work on the agreement and it went around and around. And so we're here today to move the agreement forward with Sarpy County. At the same time, I just want to also state that as we hopefully approve this and move it forward, Commissioner Rogers and I will have this item on the Child and Youth Committee meeting, June, February 7th, to talk about our facility having some portion of it be staff secure. And so just keep that in the back of your minds as we move this forward and hopefully it'll be a temporary fix to a long-term solution that we have to come up with by 2013 anyway. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. Now that I'm certain I have the right item to be discussing. First off, I want to thank Commissioners Borgeson and Rogers for all the work they've put in to bring us to this point. I intend to vote for this. I'm sorry if I seem like I'm riling the waters a little bit, I don't mean to be. I have some concerns. I am anxious for us to get to the point of having staff secure within our own facility. And in the meantime, I think doing business with Sarpy County is a good idea. I'm comfortable working with another county. I'm more trusting of what they're up to. What I'm not real trusting of is probation and there's nothing we can do about how much power probation has. My fear with this contract, I wish that the contract said it could be used only for youth that cannot legally be held at the Douglas County Youth Center, although I'm told probation wouldn't even have to necessarily follow those guidelines. Just because we say it doesn't mean they have to do it. Potentially, talking to Brad Alexander about the potential cost of this, the youth that we held last year, had they been held in Sarpy County under this arrangement, instead, we would be paying out over $600,000 more than we are today. I fear this looming obligation and what probation may end up doing to us, how much this might end up costing us. However, I view this as an interim step on the way to doing this ourselves. And frankly, if probation does put too many kids in this and we end up with some pretty big bills, it will make the baseline look a whole lot better for us moving forward to do it ourselves. So anyhow, I will be voting for this. I just have these nagging little concerns in the back of my mind. I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Commissioners Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to kind of solidify Commissioner Duda's remarks and say that I think we've, as Commissioner Borgeson and I have been working on it, I think we've come to the determination that the Board has settled with wanting to go this route. So that's why the meeting is happening, happening next week. And I think it is a transition to get there. As a matter of fact, there was an email this morning, and I'm looking at it now, that says there is some money available for us to start moving in that direction to some degree. And I just, I want to say a word of confidence for state probation because they have been a real partner with us in this. I know we've had some bad run-ins with state agencies, but they have been the best of partners with us. As a matter of fact, the home program will come online, which will be another option for us to get there. And I mean, I assure the Board, we will start moving fast to try to get this secured detention thing in place. As a matter of fact, I've asked a couple of people in the county attorney's office, you know, please don't email me anymore. The Board said they're ready to move. We're moving, just let us work it through. So I just want to assure the Board that my hope is that within six months to nine months, we'll have this solved and be ready to go with it. So this just buys us some time. Thank you.
Commissioner Borgeson?
I just want to also echo what Commissioner Rogers said in terms of, we have had a rocky relationship with the state probation, but I think we've all come around the table quite well for this one and worked very well with not only the courts and the county attorney, but the youth center. And this really is one of those JDAI options that Commissioner Rogers had us, brought forth to us and that we're starting, that this is an alternative to the detention center. And with the home program also, probation will have more than just this one option. And that's what we're hoping, that we were able to use those. So the number that you stated may, and hopefully will be less than that in reality by having more options for probation to use other than just the one. And again, I know that we're, we have some time, I mean, it's already February, almost February 2012, and we have to have this solved by 2013. And so I think it would behoove us to have this settled way before that and have the kinks worked out. So hopefully, your concerns won't come to reality and we work through all of the issues between now and then.
And I do have a couple of quick questions. I don't know who will want to answer this. The cost when we were using the Youth Links as our staff secure for one bed, and I realize we had a guarantee payment whether we used the beds or not, versus the cost of Sarpy County, $180 per night per youth, what were we paying to Youth Links per night?
Two oh seven.
Two oh seven, okay. And then I noticed also on the consent agenda, we had an item for staff secure, not staff, for a secure at the youth center at $180 tonight. And this is staff secure, which is a little different, and that we're paying the same amount. Is there a difference in providing the cost of services?
Commissioner Rogers was instrumental in getting Sarpy to agree to the same price. We take Sarpy County kids and keep them in our facility because we have the secure facility at that rate. Commissioner Rogers said, can we use that same rate for staff secure, even though staff secure does have a little higher rate in operational function than secure does?
It does, okay.
Yes. And, but Sarpy was willing to negotiate with us that same rate.
That's good, okay, very good. No further questions? No one else wishes to speak? We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. Next, we have on the agenda Health and Human Services, Commissioner Borgeson.
Second.
Okay. And next is Human Resources. The weekly civil service report is as presented. Then we come to legislative issues. Commissioner Duda, would you like to talk on LB 787?
Briefly, yes, there may be, I hope there are people that know more about this than I do. But basically, what this is saying, the staff secure that we're talking about trying to move forward within our own youth center, that we want the oversight of these facilities, we think would be more appropriate coming from the Department of Corrections than HHS. And that's what this bill is about, is specifying that the Department of Corrections and then the Nebraska Jail, I'm sorry, the Nebraska Jail Standards Board would be providing the oversight and review of what we would have or anybody else. And therefore, I would move for support of LB 787.
We have a motion and a second. Brad, did you want to address this issue or not?
Good morning, Brad Alexander, Superintendent of Douglas County Youth Center. It really is no more complicated than Commissioner Duda just stated. It just, currently, staff secure is not inspected by any agency and it's going to be. And our preference would be that it would be coming from jail standards. I understand NACO supports it. I know all of those that currently have staff secure facilities are in support of this stat, or this bill, so it's, that's it.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. Next, we have consideration of LB 1056, which is a change, changing the provisions relating to harassment and domestic abuse protection orders. Commissioner Borgeson?
Basically, in a nutshell, this is, right now, an individual would have to be served twice on these protection orders, even if they were in court. And this would allow that if the person was in court and the protection order was in place, that they would count that as them being served and the protection order would stay in place, instead of having to have them leave and the deputies go and serve them again. So.
Common sense.
Yes.
We need a motion.
A motion to approve or support?
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next, we have consideration of LB 1099, changing the provisions related to payment of juvenile support, transportation, and council expenses. Again, Commissioner Borgeson?
I'm going to turn this one over to Rick to talk about today.
Rick?
LB 1099 is Senator Brenda Council's bill, and it would be a cost shift from the county to the state, where the state would pick up the cost of guarding en light of services and court-appointed attorneys of cases coming out of juvenile court. I would think for financial reasons that this Board would greatly support this vote.
Motion to support?
Second.
Commissioner Duda?
This sounds too good to be true. And I mean, I just can't imagine the state taking back anything that they have pawned off on us. It's worthy of going for, but man, it seems like this is a long shot. But I appreciate Senator Council being willing to put this forward.
And this is as it should be because the state mandates these services.
Agreed.
So I believe we all should support it. We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Boyle's yes, too.
Commissioner Boyle?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Motion passes.
I guess that would make sense.
Then, not on the agenda, but related, we had a couple of emails from Sean Kelly, our lobbyist. One is an introducer's statement of intent from Senator Bob Crist regarding the Judiciary Committee. And the purpose of the bill is 980, the legislative bill 985 would codify the establishment and evaluation of the Nebraska Juvenile Justice Delivery Project as a pilot. The project has been operating as a pilot in Douglas County since 2009. And the letter goes on, I want to make all the Commissioners aware of this. Also, I received a phone call last night, LB 344 regarding the merger has essentially been gutted and then put back on the table as an advisory committee, but you know how things can change in the legislature. So those are a couple of things we'll want to keep our own personal eyes on and we may have on the agenda in the future. Do you mean a study committee? A study committee for merger, yes, with 12 appointees. Mary Ann? Commissioner Borgeson?
The one pilot program, if you remember, that was moving about five-plus million dollars to this pilot program so that the kids would not have to be made wards of the state in order to access services. When that contract was renewed with probation, the state only funded it about a million and a half. Senator Ashford has asked that that funding be restored, and I think the figure's $7 million. And so I think that we proved that the pilot worked, it saved money all around, and most importantly, it saved the children and their families from having to be made wards of the state. So hopefully, that will continue on through the process.
Again, a common sense solution. But there is no need for an executive session today, so I, oh, and we have a criminal justice meeting Friday, February 3rd, at 1:30 at the Douglas County Criminal Justice Center, 1709 Jackson Street, 5th floor conference room. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Always happy to lead.
Call for the vote.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
You're welcome. I'll try to remember.
Motion passes.